I guess we're going to get started.
Trustee Melina? Trustee Uyghur?
Here.
Trustee Renaudin?
Here.
Trustee Barella? Trustee DeKay?
Here.
Mayor Protown Lashley?
Here.
And Mayor Tukki?
We will start off with the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so do we have any staff in or board of the regions to be there?
Assistant Mayor, we actually have a request to do a change of venue for the Descended Silverton event.
And that was from...
So they had been requesting Kendall Mountain as the area where they would be hosting a concert on Saturday evening, August 4th. They are requesting to move it to Columbine Park. We're thinking it'll be easier to control alcohol in that space. And we're not anticipating as large of an audience as initially thought, so that'll be a better space for that event.
So were there any complications in re-adjusting the application?
No, I believe so. I will be using the same configuration we've been using for the Summer Sounds Concert Series, which has been working really well. Sheriff Conrad's been very happy with it. And it's easy for the staff to manage that, so.
So any questions for Lisa on the board for the change? Okay, so we'll just put that right on the top of your new business before the audit. Do we have any public comment? Anybody to start off with? Okay. And we'll just go under new business and we need a motion then to change the venue for Descended Silverton from...
From Kendall Mountain to Columbine Park.
Motion to approve moving the Descended Silverton venue from Kendall Mountain to Columbine Park on Saturday evening.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
False second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, then we further discussion in the board? Okay, so I guess why don't we do a little call, Michelle?
Okay, Trustee DeKay?
Yes.
Trustee Uyghur?
Yes.
Trustee Renaudin?
Yes.
Mayor Protown Lashley?
Yes.
And Mayor Tukki?
Thank you, Linda, yourself please. Okay, so under new business then is 2017 audit from Hamlin and Associates LLC. And we have our auditors and Christine with us to go over.
I'm just an interested observer.
Mayor, Mayor Protown, trustees, thank you for having me to come to present the 2017 audit for the town of Silverton. You should have in front of you a bound copy of the audit. And there's also a loose page that's a separate letter that's right there with it. Just make sure that you have what it is that I'm talking about. Okay, so those of you who have seen these before, I'm going to go over this, not page by page, but to give you an understanding of what it is that you're looking at. And for those who haven't seen it before, if you don't understand terms or want more explanation, feel free to stop me or wait at the end with a question. I'd be happy to answer any. So first, like the backup as to why you have an audit. It's required by state law that every year municipalities and local governments have a financial audit. And what we do in an audit is to go over all of the supporting financial records and some other information, the trustee minutes, for example, resolutions and ordinances, and evaluate different kinds of potential risks for the town and then perform a lot of procedures to determine whether or not the information we're looking at appears to be reasonable. So if you were to open up the audit and go to the independent auditor's report, I don't have a copy in front of me, so I don't remember the page.
Now you have a copy in front of you.
No, I do. Page one. This is the independent auditor's report. It's two pages. That's my part. Everything else that's in here is really the town's. And it is the responsibility of the town and town management. I assist with preparing it to make sure that it's in accordance with the governmental accounting standards. But this first part, those first two pages, that's mine. And this letter, this report, gives a description of my responsibilities and your responsibilities. But most important is the top of page two, which is my opinion or our opinion. And for the layperson, you can read that whole thing and walk away not understanding anything about it. But what it says is that the underlying information and the information that's in this document is reasonably stated. Now, having said that, you can still say, "So what does that mean?" From the standards for auditing, what it means is this is the highest level of assurance that we're allowed to give. That's what that means. And there's no qualification, there's no modification to that opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that these financial statements are reasonably stated. Okay? Any questions about that? A little bit more about everything else that follows in here. There are actually three different bases of accounting that are being presented in this document in addition to a bunch of notes of explanations about what the town is, where it gets its money, what policies it follows, and so on. That's where it becomes so confusing for even someone who understands accounting, because there are three different bases being presented here. And there are reasons that those different bases are being presented. I always start at the back. And the reason I start at the back, if you go to the very back, this is something that's required to be included. It's the highway users tax report. So just before that, you will see schedules of revenues and expenditures comparing budget. That's the place I start because that's where you started. At some point during the previous year, you established a budget and said, "In our different funds, we think we're going to get these kind of revenues and we believe we're going to have these different kinds of expenditures." And these statements that are the budgetary comparison schedules, they're on a basis of accounting that's called budget basis. And what that means is if you have any debt that you have to pay, it's going to show up as an expenditure on this type of a schedule because that's cash that goes out. If you're going to purchase something, a capital asset, it's going to show up as a capital expenditure. If anybody's ever heard the word depreciation, what depreciation is, is taking these capital assets that you've placed on your balance sheet and expensed over several years as you use that capital asset. You don't budget for depreciation because no cash is going out. So that's the budget basis. When we take and now start looking at the fund statements, sorry to make you flip around so much. The fund statements are in front of the notes. And you find the fund statements starting page five. Those are for the governmental funds. This is a different basis of accounting, but it's very, very close on this, on the governmental funds, very close to the budgetary basis. At the top of that schedule, you start looking down through the assets and liabilities. The assets, that's the stuff you have. The liabilities, that's the stuff you owe. The fund balances, that's the difference between the stuff you have and what you owe. And that's at a point in time, and that point in time, December 31st, 2017. On the next page, also for governmental funds, these are activities. These are things that happen throughout the year. The money that comes in, revenues that you make, and the expenditures. Now this, like I said, is very, very close to budget basis. And it is called the fund basis of accounting. And if you look at everything that was on that balance sheet on page five, you'll notice at the top there in those assets, there's no capital assets. There's no long-term debt. Because for governmental funds on the balance sheet, it is measured just with current resources. What's coming in and what's going out currently, not long-term. So you'll also notice then when you go to page six and you look under those expenditures, you don't see any depreciation because that's long-term. When you look at the proprietary funds, the balance sheet equivalent that's on page seven, immediately you'll notice something different. Right under the current assets are the capital assets. These are long-term things. So this is a basis of accounting that is similar to what you'll see for businesses in the United States, where things are not measured just in current resources, but in economic resources. That includes the things that are long-lived. It also includes the things that you owe over a long period of time. The debt that you have only in the proprietary funds. That would be the water fund, sewer fund, and refuse fund. Now you take all of the things I've talked about so far, and we have to convert those into one basis of accounting that's similar to the last basis I told you, that is similar to a business, any business in the United States. And those statements start on page three. So we've rolled up all the information from the back and pulled it up to the front. This is a big overview. This statement of net position on page three is the overview of what it is that you have and what it is that you owe long-term. Everything rolled together, the governmental activities and the business activities. So you'll see your current assets that are your cash equivalents, receivables, and so on. Then you'll see a line for your capital assets. Those are long-lived things that you didn't see on the balance sheet for your governmental funds before. This is that third basis of accounting I was talking about. Given that the information I've just discussed and everything in between, does anything pop up in mind and say, "Okay, I have a question I'd like to ask now"? Is anyone with a question? No? Okay. Then, I didn't notice anyone's eyes glazing over, which I'm a little bit glad to see. Close, was it? So I'd like to leave it at that. That kind of an introduction, the detail that's in the numbers, you should already be familiar with because you've been looking at your budgets. You've been looking at your information that you get monthly that says, "Here's how you're doing against the budget." You see, here are the balances that we're showing for bank accounts and what we're expecting to come in from accounting. So you should already have a feel for that. What you see in here should not really be a surprise, number-wise. But hopefully what I've described gives you a little more understanding of what you look at when you do look at it, what you see monthly, but also if you have to say, "Well, let's look at last year's audit because that should be covered there." You have an idea what you might be looking for, where to find it. If you run into something where, that ever happens, you're looking at something historic and you have a question, call me, email me, be happy to answer. Okay, anything else? Anything from Christine?
I was just going to advise, and I know some of you know me and some of you don't, but I usually come up or, working from home, review your financials and some of your detailed transactions where I know sometimes we need to make adjustments. And I do that on a monthly basis. And so that on a month-to-month basis, we're trying to get things fairly reviewed and finalized so that we feel like we can be providing good financial information as the months roll forward. So my background is I started off as an auditor for governmental entities. And then I worked for the town of Vale for 10 years as the controller. And then since then, I've pretty much been doing consulting to small governmental entities like yourself. And so I have an audit perspective because I was an auditor. And I have a real-life perspective from the inside of an accounting department because I ran one for the town of Vale. What I would tell you is that on a day-to-day basis, your budget actual cash-in, cash-out is what you really care about. There are a lot of adjustments that happen once a year at the end of the year to get the numbers to be in the format that's required by governmental GAAP. And that gets done, and that's why you have an audit report that says the amounts are materially correctly stated, basically. But what you guys want to focus on is what your data shows you month-to-month, day-to-day, pretty much cash-in and cash-out. The caveat to that a little bit is that in your utility system, you bill once every two months for your water, sewer, and trash. That record in your current financial system is based on the amounts that you bill and your receivables show you how much is still owed on those billings. So there's a little bit of a mental adjustment that the revenues that you see in your monthly financial statements are the totals billed, not cash collected for those receivables. So if you can make that one mental adjustment, the rest of what you're seeing out of Casell is pretty much cash-in and cash-out. I don't know if that helps.
Why is it like that?
Well, because there is a requirement, and has always been a requirement, that these proprietary funds are intended to report data as though you were running a for-profit business, even though you're under the governmental umbrella of the town of Silverton. So software is built that way, and the financial reporting is built that way. So whether or not those funds make a profit doesn't matter. It's the intent originally when they were established. A question came up several years ago about MOLIS. Maybe we should make that proprietary fund. Don't. What you really care about at MOLIS is are your cash receipts covering your cash disbursements? If you do this whole rigamarole of, "Let's make it a proprietary fund because the intent might be to make a profit," but then you have to start capitalizing assets and keeping track of them and doing a lot of minutia that really doesn't matter, in my opinion, to you guys. What you want to know is, are you charging enough to cover your cash expenses? And so I would advise you not to go that route, but that's how it's evolved the way it is.
It's still confusing to me why MOLIS is put as a...
A governmental fund?
Yeah, like water, sewer, and trash.
Well, it's not. It's as a governmental fund, not as a proprietary fund.
No, no, it's a, I just, I just left my head. Enterprise is one of the enterprise funds.
It's not. It's one of the governmental funds. Your proprietary funds are water, sewer, and trash.
Okay.
There are no long-term assets on that balance sheet.
That's interesting because every time we bring it up, somebody said, "Because that's the way..." What's his name from Pagosa wanted it, not the, not the near road.
Oh, Margarita?
Yeah, Margarita.
No, in fact, I was at a board meeting back when Mark was here, and I said the exact same thing that I just said. There's somebody, and I don't remember who, but somebody brought up the idea of, "Well, why don't we make the MOLIS fund a proprietary fund?" And then and now, I'm saying, "I don't think you should go through that because creating a proprietary fund, unless you're trying to go out and get some sort of debt that requires that type of financial reporting." But a lot of this long-term asset and liability accounting is a little bit of a hamster wheel, honestly. To calculate these numbers, update these numbers, adjust these numbers, depreciate these numbers, and it doesn't give you what you really want to know. What you want to know is closer to a cash-in, cash-out basis. So in my opinion, it is inadvisable to force that to be a proprietary fund. I don't think that does you guys any good.
I think the confusion comes with MOLIS being included in part of the administrative fees that pay back the general fund.
Well, that's okay. That has nothing to do with the classification of a proprietary fund.
Right.
And when you say proprietary, business type or enterprise is proprietary?
Okay, I was going to ask if that was the same thing.
Yes.
But it's always, I mean, in the last two years, it's been talked about as being one of the enterprise funds.
And it isn't.
Okay.
No, it's a special revenue fund.
Right. And the definition of a special revenue fund is that you have a dedicated source of revenue to cover the expenses related to that revenue, which is exactly what MOLIS is and exactly the way it is reported. I guess no said about that, but... If I am unclear, I'll keep talking. You probably don't want that.
Thank you.
Okay, so if I could say one more thing about the loose piece of paper that accompanied the audit. This letter is to management, Board of Trustees, Mayor, Mayor Protown. It's required by auditing standards. And the information that's covered here is required. The most important piece of this has to do with the italicized portions as you run through it. But if any time we had found something that was a deficiency that was significant or anything was a material deficiency in how the operation was working, this is where we would disclose it. If there had been anything that looked like the potential of significant errors or even fraud, that kind of information would have come to you directly, not waiting for this point. We would have come to you and talked to you about it. So you can be rest assured, there was none of that. Everything looks good. And I do recommend, because of how small the organization is, especially in finance, that you do everything you can to keep this young lady here because it's really hard. What's happening for a lot of the smaller municipalities is keeping good staff. And I also recommend that you continue, because of the small amount of staff, for internal control reasons, that you keep a fee accountant like Christine.
I didn't tell him to say that.
You can pay me later. No, she did not tell me. But it's a common situation where we have the small municipalities where they have a fee accountant. And we're telling all of them, we're recommending to all of them, that if they can do it, they should continue it. Because otherwise, you could end up out of control and not know until it's too late.
No, and she keeps us in control.
Good. Okay, that's it from me.
Any other questions from the board? Well, thank you very much for coming down.
You're welcome.
And if there are any concerns, I'm sure that you can email, so that we can be up on the board.
I do, I think this is a really good time, though, if you have any kind of questions, you want to understand the structure of things. I know that the utilities, understanding that those are projected revenue, or expected revenue, I guess, billed revenue.
Billed is the word.
Billed revenue, rather than what we've collected.
Yeah, you've earned it. That's why it's reported that way. And then the balance sheet account, the accounts receivable, helps you keep track of who hasn't paid yet. So when you get your Casell financials every two months, you get a really big number in your receivables on the balance sheet on the billing months, you know, February 28th and April 30th and everything, because it was billed on that date and nobody's paid it yet. So you expect that number to be high. And then as the months, you know, the two-month cycle kind of continues, then that number drops as people make those payments until the next bill cycle comes out. But yeah, the revenue number you're looking at is what's billed, not what is paid.
And we don't carry a lot of liability from what we've, we've asked, if in fact there are a lot of water or sewer records bills that are not being paid.
No, we've gotten it down, where we had little to no certification. I think we may have had none in this last year.
Right, and that's the other point, is that if people don't pay their bills, then it gets certified to the county treasurer and collected with their property taxes. So you have very little uncollected, you should really have none, uncollected billed receivables. So the intent is that what's billed is getting paid eventually. It may not be paid immediately, but eventually. And you charge some late fees on it if it is late. But yeah, the activity in the certifications has gone way down.
I think maybe especially for the newer trustees, if you have questions, and all of you, it seems to be a point of confusion each year, understanding how we determine or how we calculate the administrative fees. And could you maybe give us sort of a perspective on what you see in other communities or what you see the way we're doing that structure and whether that's beneficial or what another option might be?
I can tell you, or at least what I've seen. Entities do that in various ways. I have another client who's probably a little bit, I don't know, fairly similar to your size. They also have water, sewer, and they don't have trash, but they have something else. That's not true, they do have trash. They actually, instead of charging an admin fee across the funds, what they do is they take largely the salaries of the administrator and they have two accounting people, clerk, some of the maintenance people. clerk, some of the maintenance people. They actually charge their salaries directly on a percentage. So they assume that 30% of those people's time is for water and 30% is for sewer. And, you know, 10% is for trash and the rest of it is just kind of general activities kind of stuff. So instead of calculating an administrative fee and then recording that transaction, and we're doing it once a quarter here, but they do it on a payroll basis. Every time the payroll's paid, they split those specific salaries. And they don't really go to the minutia of adjusting for like insurance and other overhead type of costs that they probably could, but they don't do that. For them, it's fairly simple. They kind of assume that this percentage split across those areas approximates the costs for those funds. You can argue it a lot of different ways. Now certainly the insurance applies to the entity, and that can be a big cost. And when I said salaries, I mean salaries and benefits for those people. There are other costs that are very specific to those enterprises. Those get charged directly to water, sewer, or trash as they, you know, are obvious repairs or supplies or anything like that. Sometimes it's really hard to identify that. You know, when you buy nuts and bolts, are they going to the water plant or are they going to the sewer plant? You know, so those decisions are all subject to review, adjustment, and let's change it and let's do it a different way. But one of the simplest ways to do it is the way you guys do it. Is let's calculate the types of costs and split them across the funds and record an expense transaction on each of those proprietary funds and an equal revenue to the general fund to repay the general fund for the costs that the general fund paid for that is on behalf of those other funds. And that's where this admin decalculation comes in. Is it planned, it's budgeted, we take that number and divide it by four and record one quarter of the costs every quarter. You have the ability at the end of the year to adjust that. When you get around to the end of the year, maybe you decided, you know what, that was a little too high. Let's charge something less than that, and that's happened. Mark Garcia adjusted that once with the approval of the board to adjust it down. If it's not high enough, okay, let's do that, and maybe you'll need a supplemental budget for that if you have to increase the costs that you planned on. But you know, there's room for adjustment in there. But the budget is a plan. Plans change. Day-to-day operations change. And that's the way it is. So I can say that. I don't know if you've seen elsewhere somewhere else, any better than that.
Well, I probably see a wider variety in the sizes of municipalities. We audit the city of Brighton and hundreds of millions in their budget. And a lot of what they do is not that different. When it comes to, you have these different funds, the enterprise funds. There's a certain amount of administrative that is coming from other departments, and there is a portion that gets allocated to them, and they do that monthly. Some of the other municipalities that are similar to the size of Silverton, they're doing a similar thing of either an administrative fee that you've done, same idea, or like Christine described where it is, it's just a salary allocation to those funds. And they ignore the rest. So what you're doing is reasonable. If it's not, doesn't take too much brain power, and you can trace through to the support of how you come up with the numbers. I think it's fine. And like Christine said, you can adjust it at any time for any number of reasons. Like you said, we're trying to build a little bit of reserve in these funds, and we think that, you know, we could bring down that administrative fee a little bit to help those funds build their reserves. And that would be fine.
Do you think that's a prudent way of doing it? Of making sure that you do have an adequate amount of reserves in the event of something catastrophic happening?
Yes.
Good.
Is there a percentage that you would suggest or range in percentage overall that should be set aside and reserved?
For reserve?
Uh-huh. Out of an overall financial. I mean, is there a standard?
There is. The state. The state of Colorado has a document that lays out. In fact, they have these economic measures, and they're looking at yours and they're deciding. Does it look like you have enough reserve? Do these, they have a whole set of ratios and percentages and things that they look at. If you haven't been getting any nasty letters from the state saying that you're missing those economic targets, then you're doing okay. But there is, we can go, we can dig into those and get those for you so you can see what it is the people are using. What is the standard that this is what it looks like collectively across the state, and these are the benchmarks that the state recommends.
You see things like, you know, three months of expenditures. That's pretty common. A percentage, I think I've seen, you know, maybe a 20% of, you know, something. Thing about expenditures is they fluctuate, so you're really looking at averages there, too. And whether or not that's a minimum, I mean, you can get into a whole philosophical argument. I'll give you a couple of extremes here. I had a conversation back in my auditing days, early on, with a county sheriff who felt like every dollar that was collected by a county should be spent that year on those citizens and that the fund balance at the end of every year should be zero. That's one extreme. The other extreme is let's overcharge everybody now to build up reserves so somebody 10 years from now doesn't have to come up with the money to build a new water plant. So is that fair? You know? So somewhere in between is probably where most people are thinking. That's where you get these fund balance reserves. What's an adequate cash flow reserve? Is it a three-month of expenditures, which sometimes is hard to maintain? Especially if you have a year where you have, you know, oh, let's say a mine floods your river and you have a lot of costs. Or maybe there's some fires that stop your economic train. You know, maybe three months is hard to maintain in those situations. Hypothetical, of course. Which might move your, you know, move you on that spectrum that I just described. Let's spend every dollar we collect on the people that are here this year versus let's have a little bit in reserve so that we've got a little bit of a cushion. But how much cushion is too much? Are you really overcharging the people that are there right now for something, a benefit they'll never get? Is that fair? You know, so you kind of mentally, and you should be thinking about this as you're budgeting. Where on that spectrum do you fall, and that might help you make some of your budgeting decisions?
A question about the water, sewer, trash fund. So Silverton now is metered, but we also charge businesses an excess amount, like depending, so restaurants, it's based on their seating. So you might be charged 1.2 times the normal amount of base fees and administrative fees and all those kinds of things. And the explanation was, was that that system was put in place before we had metered water, sewer, trash. And I was just curious if you guys have any experience with that? If you think that that's a good thing for our municipality to be doing? Is there precedent or do other communities do similar kinds of things as well to kind of increase the rate?
Well, didn't you guys have engineers in that did a rate study and a calculation of all that stuff?
And actually, we only have one rate structure for water and sewer. And trash has EQRs.
Yes, because trash is a metered.
Right, and so that's the only one of those services that has that supplemental charged based on a commercial property or multifamily home, something like that.
Yeah.
I think, I know other municipalities have multiple rate structures where it could be, you know, one rate for apartments, one rate for commercial businesses, one rate for single-family residences, or EQRs on, which is the equivalency rate, I think is what it stands for, on one rate for water and sewer, which we don't do. We just have the one flat.
Yeah, to be honest, I have never advised or been involved with somebody setting their rates. I only account for, once it's been, once it's been set, this is what either we're collecting, what the revenue is, what the receivables are. So I can't say that I can tell you that what I think. To be honest.
Thank you.
You bet. I don't know if you've ever been on those, but that's more, in my mind, more of an engineering kind of a thing. Are your rates high enough to cover your operating costs plus, you know, all the other stuff that engineers do?
I have one other question. You said that you guys also review things like board minutes, ordinances, things like that. What level in detail do you guys kind of go into that? Do you make sure that, so one example that I'm kind of thinking of is our town code was improperly adopted. And so that's kind of caused us some strife that we're trying to resolve. Properly adopting the code after the fact. And a lot of people have come forward and said the town code that we adopted wasn't that good and we should start from scratch and all that. Do you guys go that into detail and that kind of thing? Or is that more of a sort of legal?
That's more for legal. What we're looking for are the things that might impact the finances and risk. So if you have decided to adopt a new employee manual, we would see that and say, we need a copy of that employee manual so we can review it and to see if you've taken out all the things that would mitigate risk. And now are you putting yourself in a bad position that could affect you financially? That's the kind of thing. Did you pass the budget?
Yeah.
Those kinds of things. Did you pass it properly? Did you have a quorum? I don't look for that.
Yeah.
Anything else, Mayor?
Anything else from the board?
We have your number.
Yes, and my email.
Thank you both for being here.
You want them to move to adopt the?
Do I want them to move? I want them to move, yeah. Move to ad- to...
Or accept?
Accept the audit, sure. I'd like to hear that.
So I would entertain a motion to accept the audit as presented.
Awesome.
So we have a motion from trustee Renaudin.
Second.
A second from Mayor Pro Tem Lashley. Anything else from the board? Can you roll call please, yourself?
Trustee Renaudin?
Yes.
Trustee Uigert?
Yes.
Trustee DeKay?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lashley?
Yes.
And Mayor Tuki?
Yes.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you don't mind, I will leave and leave you to the rest of whatever it is that you need to do here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Callahan.
Thank you.
I assume so. Please stay. Gregor, you still on the phone?
Yes, this is Greg. Still on the phone. Are you ready for me?
Yes, so now we're down to underly business number C, which is the financial forecast. So it's for Gregor Shulte.
So good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, well, first of all, it's a pleasure to be with you tonight. I apologize that I couldn't be there in person, but I'm actually in Kingman, Arizona, on my way to California. So hopefully, we can get through this. And I understand, I'm kind of, I'm sorry that there's going to be probably some inherent limitations trying to go over a lot of numbers and spreadsheets over the phone. But if you'll bear with me, I think I can summarize this and hopefully answer some questions and see where this takes us. So first of all, I think what I'd like to do is just say that I'd like to extend my thanks to the staff and the folks at our town hall for helping me to put this together because really, I couldn't have done this without their help. And it's, I'm going to be kind of going through mainly two spreadsheets that summarizes a lot of data. And there's more extensive spreadsheets and that are building blocks behind the two summary ones. And I guess, I think I remember, or I heard the auditor say that, or maybe it was trustee Renaudin saying that, you know, a budget is a plan. And I think like they say with any battle plan, it goes out the window with the first bullet. And maybe with the budget, it kind of goes out with the first account payable in that first month. But it is your budget plan. And I think the other observation that I'd like to leave with you tonight is that these spreadsheets that I put together, there's obviously some inherent imperfections with them. And it's really, it's a tool. And hopefully, though, it's set up in such a way so that it can be manipulated so that as the data gets better and you have more definitive information, that you can plug it in and it'll help to inform and to guide the actions for the staff and the council going forward. So with that sort of introduction, what I'd like to do is call your attention to the spreadsheet that in the upper left-hand corner, it says, it's the summary revised budget dash 2018. I think Michelle's going to portray that up, or maybe you have a hard copy. Is that up by any chance?
It's up on the screen. We're having some printing issues, so I wasn't able to print hard copies for them.
Okay. So what I'm going to do is kind of step you through this, and I'm going to step, kind of switch between this spreadsheet and another one. And if you'll just kind of bear with me, I will stop periodically to ask for questions so that we're all on the same page going forward. So first of all, why did we do this? Obviously, we had a very significant event with a fire in the train and the closure of the highway and that sort of thing. And so that was, the question was, how is that going to impact the town's budget? And as you'll see from the spreadsheet, where I really focused on was the general fund. And so that is where you collect a lot of your sales tax revenue. And of course, it doesn't go, it's not surprising to anybody that the town is, just like most towns, is very heavily reliant upon the sales tax and the visitors that we have, particularly during the summer. So first of all, I just want to kind of step through with you that very first left-hand column is the adopted budget. And so you'll see for, again, for the general fund only. But the revenue, the expectation, the budget for 2018 was $2.315 million. And from an expense standpoint, the budget was $2.381 million in expenses. And so essentially what that meant is that you were going to go into fund balance about $66,000. There's nothing wrong with that, you know? You have a plan and sometimes you want to do a lot of different things, and so it's okay to dip into fund balance. So that was the initial plan. Now, obviously, that's not what's going to happen because of what the circumstances were. So what I would like to next do is call your attention to the revised estimate column, which is just one column over to the right from the adopted budget. And in that, I'm going to talk about revenues first. I'm going to kind of explain how I oriented this. So first of all, for both revenues and expenses, I sat down with all the different staff members from all the different departments, and we talked about what we thought and what we were going to project, how we might end up at the end of the year 2018. And so obviously, you have a lot of different revenue categories, and then you have a lot of different, let's just call them departments, for your expenses. So sales tax is recorded in that very first line item called taxes. And in that revised estimate, that $1.215 million, that does include that we would fully realize all the sales tax that we budgeted for. And just rounding, a big round number, is $900,000 is what the budget was for sales tax. Now, I know that, we know that we're not going to get that, but I did that for... Now, I know that, we know that we're not going to get that, but I did that for a reason, you know? I'll illustrate why. So we went through all the other line items, license permits, intergovernmental charges, court fines, all those things, and we tried to project out what we thought we would get revenue for 2018. And in taxes, like I said, the reason why I left the sales tax at $900,000, which would be 100% receipt, is that I wanted to demonstrate that even if we collected every single dollar of sales tax revenue, we were still projecting to come in with less revenue. So you see that difference column there is that $259,000 represents our best estimate, I want to emphasize that, best estimate, that even if we collected every single sales tax dollar, we were going to come up short, $259,000 in revenue. Now, let me just briefly explain how we arrived at that and why that is. So you'll see the difference column, and you'll see the difference items. So for example, and I'm just going to, the big one is intergovernmental revenue. So within that category of revenue, we also, that's where we record our grant revenue, for example. So in talking with the staff, you know, use the planning grant for the library as an example, that we were talking about the timeline for that. And given the fact that we have to execute the contract by September, and that after that, you're going to have to secure a project architect, have to get that person on board, and then with the holidays, it seemed to us unlikely that we would start to incur a lot of costs and as a consequence, corresponding reimbursement revenue for grants. And so that was one of, that's just an example of some of the analysis that we went through as to what we might expect by the end of the calendar year. Now, could we get a project architect on board and have them do some work in December and record some revenue? That we didn't think so? Maybe. But that was kind of our estimate at that particular juncture when we did that. Another example, just as, for example, is that for Kendall Mountain, we want to rent that out, and we budgeted $25,000 at the beginning of the year of that. But the council subsequently adopted a policy whereby we allow nonprofits to, I think, either get free or reduce fees on that. So we're not, and the activity that's occurred so far has been a lot of nonprofits. So that's a policy choice by the council, and that's fine, but that's something that is another example where we're not getting to get the revenue that we once thought that we were going to. So, as I said, that shows up in the revenues as 259. Going down on to expenses, like I said, I sat down with all the different folks there at Town Hall, and we went through each line item and made an estimate as to where we might end up at the end of the year. And again, to the staff's credit, we, you know, combed through that, we found some savings. And then also, we had to recognize that, you know what? We were probably going to spend a little bit more in some line items than we thought. And again, that's normal. And so there was, there's a net effect. So, what you'll see if you go down to the difference column, that third one at the total expenses, is that we found what we thought was $274,000 in savings. So, without, again, talking about sales tax, we actually found that we were not going to have to dip into fund balance quite as much as we initially thought, so that was basically 50 grand instead of 66. Okay, so, the big thrill in the room, so to speak, is the sales tax. And now I'm going to ask Michelle to move to the monthly projection tab on that same spreadsheet, and it's the one that has the colors on it. I don't know if it's showing colors.
Yep.
Up on your screen. Okay. So, here's the challenge. And this is where there's this inherent imperfection, so to speak, but on one level, it's also kind of fascinating. So, on a separate spreadsheet that I, that's, I don't know if Michelle has it, but it's, I think I can step through it, is that we have sales tax data 2013 through 2017. And when you look at that data and you extrapolate that out, what it shows us, and this probably isn't a surprise to folks, is that you have a fairly predictable percentage of the total that you're going to see in certain months. Let me rephrase that a different way, I'm not sure I said that really well. So if you're looking at that spreadsheet with the colors, if you look in the third column, it says 2013 dash 2017, the average historical percent. So based upon that five-year history, what you can, what the data shows is that on average, 3% of the total occurs in the month of January. And that is regardless of the actual total amount. And if you look at the months, and you see that January, February, and April are all pretty the same, you see March is just a smidge higher, and that's probably spring break. And then the revenue really starts to occur, starting in May, and then your big months are obviously June, July, and August and September. And I'm sure that doesn't surprise anybody. That probably feels right. And then, starting in October is when it really starts to drop off, and then November and December are pretty similar to the first four months of the year. And like I said, that, you know, half your year is kind of the same, you know? March is a little bit different, again, but like I said, I'm sure hypothesizing, it's probably spring break. But all your revenue from a sales tax standpoint historically is occurring during those six months during the year. So, if you take that information, and if you extrapolate that out, then you can predict, based upon, or you can do the math essentially, and you can try and predict what kind of money that you could expect based upon what your budgeted amount is going to occur in that month. Okay? So, so that's what we did as sort of, and that's, you know, again, hypothesizing, of course, but this is what the data set tells us. And so, in that spreadsheet, you'll see a whole bunch of different colors, and for green, that is actual data. So for January, February, March, and April, at the time that I did this particular spreadsheet, we had actual sales tax data. I'm going to digress for a minute and just say that, maybe the trustees are aware, maybe they're not, but we get our sales tax data two months in arrears. And so, for example, and this I think is a pertinent bit, is we're not going to get the data for June until August. And Michelle knows the exact date, but usually it's around between, around August 8th through 10th, or something like that, is when the actual data and deposit actually arrives. So we're at a little bit of a disadvantage because the lag time from the Department of Revenue is two months. But nevertheless, so the green represents the actual data. The blue boxes represent what I'm calling sort of a normal month if you multiply the percentage, the historical percentage, by the sales tax budget, which is the 900,000. And that is what we would predict that we would get if it was normal. Now, we know that this summer isn't normal. And so that's why what we did is set up this spreadsheet, and you have the different colors. And now, Michelle, if you, on my computer, you have to scroll down a little bit, but you'll see is that we, or we created a whole bunch of different scenarios. And the scenarios were based upon what might happen in certain months. And I color-coded it just to hopefully make it a little bit easier, a little bit easier to read. And I guess I'd also like to step back for a minute and just say that, you know, as you can see, I created a whole bunch of scenarios. Some of them are totally unrealistic, but I think they give you a sense of how it looks. And I wanted to, and I did it also, so you could get a sense of magnitude of what the impact is. Because really, at the end of the day, how does this hit our bottom line? How do, how can, and what do we do about it? So that's kind of where it comes down to. And so, the darker red was a 10% reduction, the kind of pinkish is 25%, yellowish is 50, light, white-blue is 75, and so on. And so what you can do is, you kind of look at maybe a best-case scenario or even a worst-case scenario. And so, for example, Scenario A, which represents, and I'm just going to step through this so you understand the methodology, what this represents is that we have January, February, March, and April as actual data. At the time that I did this spreadsheet, we didn't have May, but we probably have May now. But if it was normal, we could expect around $63,000. And since the fire started on June 1st, May should have been normal. May should have been okay.
And it was.
And then if we, I'm sorry?
It was normal. I can't remember the exact number of it right off the top of my head. I'll have to try to look it up.
Okay. So again, under Scenario A, if you assumed a 25% reduction for each month of June, July, August, and September, that would be, that shows the light pink numbers. And then, again, at this point when I did this, you know, the train hadn't started yet, but, you know, this also was thinking that October, November, and December would be normal, and that it wouldn't be impacted so much because the train traffic is not really there, and you're back to your winter months essentially. So that represents a, you know, kind of what I would call a best-case scenario. And in that event, what that means is that your sales tax projection, again emphasizing projection, would be $744,000, and that means a difference of $155,000 that you're going to be short. Now, using that as an example, Michelle, if you don't mind, switching back to the prior spreadsheet, which is the summary. Are you back?
I'm back.
Okay. So going back, and if you look under the fourth column, you'll see 25% Scenario A. And in that first line, taxes, it's bold in italics, $1,059,000, that includes the $744,000 from the prior page. So you plug that in for the sales tax number, plus all the other estimates we did for the revenue, that comes up with $1.9 million in revenue. We also would further assume that the revised estimate for the expenses would be the same, so the 2.1. Okay? Now, you got your audit tonight, and so your, when the budget was prepared, you had to do an estimated ending fund balance, which if you look at your budget, was 580. And we actually got the audit document, actually the day before I left. And so what we did is we plugged in the revised ending fund balance for 2017, which is the beginning fund balance for 2018, that's 614, so that was like $34,000 better in that. And so, what you're looking at is then, between the $1.9 million and the $2.1 million in expenses, is basically a $2,006 hit to fund balance. And that leaves you with an ending fund balance of 407. Now, that is not that much different if you scroll further down to what your two-month reserve, two-month expenses reserves is. It's around, it's 400,000 plus your table reserves. So that's not that far off. Now, like I said, and I don't want to, I'm not going to go through every single one of these, but all of these scenarios shows potential differences in what you're doing. So, again, Michelle, if you don't mind, can you go back to the other tab where it has the colors?
Okay.
Monthly projections?
I'm there.
Okay, thank you. So really, and this is, I think, the, hopefully, the utility of this tool is that you can look at and see what, what do you think is going to happen? Now, in a certain sense, you know, and like I said, I put in a lot of different scenarios. So I'm going to take you to the one that's really kind of crazy, but who knows? Maybe it's even actually pretty close, is that Scenario E. And so in that case, that was an assumed 75% reduction in June, because I think that June is going to be the worst month, a 50% reduction in July, because the train started up mid-month, and then further 25% reduction in August and September. So, I mean, that shows that you can, and kind of like I said before, you know, you can, you can make up almost any kind of scenario and plug in the numbers to see what it is. So what does this all tell you? What this tells me when I look at it, and again, I'm sorry, Michelle, but could you bring us back to the summary sheet, the one before?
Okay.
Is that, and again, this is just my opinion, but what this sheet, in all the different scenarios, tells me is that I think you guys are going to be okay. Because you have the two-month reserve expense, and because you have the unrestricted fund balance that you do, you can weather this. It just depends on what comfort level that you have dipping into your reserves and what you may want to do about it. Here's the other thing, and this is, this is my advice to you at this juncture, is that I would wait until you have the June sales tax numbers, because right now, we don't really know what happened in June. And I think, hopefully, I think we're all sort of agreed that June was the worst month. And right now, all we have is anecdotal information. I mean, I heard sometimes that, for example, the people on Blair Street, Blair Street were 90% down, and I heard that people on Green Street were anywhere from 50 to 30% down. So what does that average out to you? I don't know. But the thing is that we don't really know, and I think June is a critical month because that's going to be the worst. And so you're going to know June probably in about, you know, right around two weeks. And so that is going to be an important bit of information to plug in to this spreadsheet to kind of help guide what you might do. So here's kind of my last thoughts, and I guess I'll take questions after this. And first of all, I appreciate you guys bearing with me through this, but it comes down to a policy decision for you guys, and this is why you get paid the really big bucks. So, you know, you have this reserve and fund balance, and arguably, you know, you could say, "Hey, this is what reserves are for. We have an emergency, it's an unusual, hopefully, one-time event." It's not, it's not that you guys were structurally imbalanced from a budget standpoint, and that's a good thing. But you may say, you know, depending upon what the data tells you, "Hey, I don't, I don't, I don't feel comfortable dipping into reserves that far," whatever that happens to be. Maybe you do, maybe you don't. But then if you don't, then what do you do? And so from an organizational standpoint, that's where sort of the rub becomes, is that in any organization, particularly in governmental ones, your expenses and labor. And we've already gone through the expenses and scrubbed them, you know, reasonably well, I think. Is there some more savings? Perhaps? Is there some more savings? Perhaps. But not in a real material way, I think. So it really becomes kind of a question as to what do you, what do you do? And is, do you want to go and hit labor? And so that's, that's a pretty significant question. But that, that is the policy question that the council, I think, will need to confront. In my opinion, not just yet, but because you really don't know what you're talking about yet. But that is something. And then the secondary question to that is, if you are going to look at labor, then what, what services do you not want to provide? Because really, that's what it comes down to. It's not, it's because that's, that's what you're in the business of, is providing services. And it's particularly challenging for a small organization because you have a lot of one-person departments out. And, you know, Public Works and Parks probably has more folks, you know, including the Seasonals, but they're doing stuff. And so you have to, you have to ask yourself, are we, are we ready to sacrifice services to the community and to your visitors? And how does that balance with your, your comfort level with going into fund balance? So again, I'm just going to, here's kind of just a quick summary is that my advice to you is to see what happens in June, because that's going to be a key month, and see, see how bad that is, and, or hopefully it's not as bad as we think. And see where that, that is. And, you know, have that discussion about what, how you feel about dipping into reserves and how far. As I said, my reading of the data shows that you guys can weather this by, by going into reserves. And I don't think it's going to be the worst-case scenario, which I think is Scenario C. And I don't think it's going to be the best-case scenario, but it's going to be something in between. And like I said, I think, I think you can weather it. And with that, I will stop. And again, thanks for your patience. And hopefully, I can answer any questions you may have. Speechless, huh?
Thank you, Greg.
If there's no questions, maybe, or not just yet, you're still percolating about that. Can I, do you mind if I, I guess, since Patrick took the time to travel to attend the meeting, is there anything, Patrick, you'd like to add or any observations? One thing I would like to say is that I would like to add my thanks to Patrick and Dola. I think some of the trustees may have known that Dola sent one of their fiscal people, Cynthia Thayer, down, and she was there when we were putting this together. And I'm certainly not going to speak for her, but, you know, when she reviewed the spreadsheet, she, she thought the methodology was reasonable and would be of utility to you all. So with that, maybe Patrick can give us just two cents.
Sure, thanks, Greg. First off, I, my first thing on my comments I was going to make is exactly what just Greg was saying. Based on my years of experience in doing budgets in a similar-sized community, and over those years facing somewhat similar situations where we've had those years where crisis occurred and we had to make adjustments and reanalysis of our budget. I think, even take a step back, I'll go back even to the comments that were being made during the audit. All of those are very valid. The way you analyze, the way you look at, the way you try to plan out your future, the adjustments of, you could take a budget, I used to tell council members all the time, you adopt a budget that last meeting in December, and it's not uncommon, that first meeting in January, you've already got an adjustment you're making to that budget. I mean, that's just the same, you said it perfect before. You adopt a budget, and then it kind of gets thrown out the window in some ways because all these things occur that you didn't anticipate. I mean, when you're doing a budget in October, November, to adopt in December, you can only speculate what June is going to hold for you. And if we all had that crystal ball, we'd all create this perfect budget. But you don't. So all of this comes down to how you take the data, how you do that analysis, and you look at these different scenarios. And I think what Greg has put together here is an excellent tool to really look at different scenarios. And there is validation in going to your different extremes and then different levels in between to try and evaluate where we could potentially go. And the more data, and I love the flexibility of this tool because it also allows, as more data comes in, as you have the June numbers, and I, once again, couldn't agree more with Greg. We're this close to getting the June numbers, that's really going to dictate where our hard numbers are that we can plug into this. Let's wait and evaluate. My recommendation would be wait and evaluate, see what those numbers do. There's also additional data that you can be gaining, gathering for the upcoming months down the line. Last Monday, I was on, the state drought task force was in the region doing a tower, a tour, excuse me. And ironically, it was last Monday, so before the rains came on Tuesday and washed out everything that it did. But Al Harper was a part of that tour. And he talked about his numbers for July and August and, and the impacts of everything on the train. But he also talked about September and October. And he says, as of right now, September and October bookings are up 10% over last year. So, once again, gaining some of that data to be able to plug into a tool like this and do some of that analysis. And it, it's going to change. What we can sit here tonight and look at these numbers will be different two weeks from now, which will be different 30 days from now. But that's where it is. This is the important part of what you guys are doing right now, is you're engaging, you're looking, you're monitoring, you're, you're really watching what you want to do these things. But you got to make your decisions, which are not always easy because the decisions have those long-term impacts of where you could go with some of these things. And, and you want to take that into consideration. Now, what Greg said, we did have, Tiffany and Molly and I had an opportunity to sit down with Michelle at, at the CML conference back in June. And we talked about getting Cynthia to come down here. And I was actually supposed to come here with Cynthia that day, but then I got called away to the spring fire that Sunday when she was in, in Euray staying the night to come up here Monday. And then we had Red Mountain washed out, of course. And so she made the long drive around. But I'll tell you Cynthia's comment, and I can speak for Cynthia. She felt very confident in Greg's analysis and what was presented here and thought this was an excellent tool, once again, to assist all of you in where you're going forward with some of these things. I think Greg's comments are absolutely right about looking at where you are with your reserves and your ending fund balances. And really, that consideration of can we weather this storm? What does that mean and where do we want to go? Now, if you do decide that level of where you can absorb the hit, so to speak, as Greg said, you need to look at, it's not just the labor piece that you're looking at. You really need to start questioning, what are the services that we're impacting? That's where it comes down to. It's not, okay, we lay off people, or we're going to make a cut here along those things. You all are making the decision, or would be making a decision, of what services do we want to cut back on? And you may have some things. There are people that take advantage of situations like this to really take that hard look at finances and say, do we have certain services that we do that really don't have a benefit to our community? But we just do them because we've always done them? There is that analysis you can do. But more often than not, I find you're going to, you're going to see most of the services you have high demand for. And it doesn't matter whether the train stopped running or we have some other catastrophic event that's occurring. Your citizens have expectations and your visitors have expectations when they come here. And you need to look at those services that you are providing. And if you're saying, okay, maybe we consider cutting services, you need to look at what that impact is going to be on those people that are here. Because you all, as the leaders of your community, are trying to get your community back to normal as best you can. Now, obviously, there's things that are out of your control. But you are taking steps with those things that are with you, that are within your control and trying to get your community back to normal. Take the lead and say, listen, folks, we're going to be all right. We're going to get through this. This is how we're going to get through those things. And if you look at those services, you want to make sure, if you are looking at cutting services, what cuts you would be making that aren't going to impact that, that perception of we are getting back to normal. Another consideration you want to do is, you can't just, it's not a flick of a switch. If you cut a service and just say, okay, we turned off, okay, we can cut. But when you go to turn back on, it doesn't start up that, that quick again. If you lose people, I know, actually, this was something else that Al made comment on in that tour last week, is struggling with, actually, I should take that back. Both Purgatory Mountain and, and the train made the comment, they lost some personnel because of the shutdowns that they had to do. Well, guess what? Those personnel moved on and found other jobs. And now, like Purgatory Mountain was saying, we're trying to ramp up. We're ready to go, and we can't get personnel to fill those positions. So they have services that they're unable to provide. And it isn't because they're not ready to provide it, it's because they can't get that personnel back to do that. And so that's another thing that you have to take a balance in with this, those considerations when you, when you are evaluating possible cuts to service. So those are just some pieces that I would recommend. I've gone through those number, these numbers. Greg and Michelle have obviously put all this together and your staff. Cynthia has gone through these numbers. We think we have, you guys have a very good tool to assist with your decision-making. We also feel that you are in financially a position to, within reason with the data that we have right now, absorb some of this impact. Obviously, that could change though. You know, once we get those June numbers and we get a really good understanding of how significant June was. But also, as we continue to get additional data of what are some of the long-term projections. You've got some outstanding people here who have not only looked at and really put together a number for you here, but I also know you have outstanding people here who are doing plans for your community of saying, where can we go? And there are resources still that are coming in and looking at how to assist in those ways. So it's not just, okay, June potentially was crappy. What's that mean for the rest of the year? But starting to look at what's August, what's September, what's October going to entail? And what are those opportunities that you can capitalize on to offset the impacts that we've had, that we've been all facing in the region? That was a long, lengthy conclusion of saying Greg did a really good job.
Tristan, do you have anything to say?
No, I think, I like the format of this tool. And I appreciate him walking through that so we could see the logic of how it was produced. And it makes an awful lot of sense to me.
And I, I want to just say, I, you know, I know Greg's taking the time here on the phone too. But, you know, he and I have had conversations that I want, want to pledge. And once again, I told this to Tiffany and Molly when we were at CML. I've told it to Michelle. I think I've even mentioned it to the mayor when I've had the opportunity to speak. You're not in this alone either. These resources to continue to help you evaluate, these will remain here. Cynthia was happy to come down here. Michelle's got her contact information. Even as we have additional data and we make adjustments with this tool, Michelle can call on me, we can call on Cynthia. I think Cynthia would love to have an opportunity to come back down here again and, and, and get to look at this. I mean, we live in a great part of the state. I can tell you a lot of my peers in the Denver office love to come down here every chance they get. If they had to go out on the eastern plains, maybe they would drag their heels a little bit more. But we have some resources that are here beyond just all of you. I don't want you to feel you have to have this burden on your shoulders alone. There are people that are here that will be here continuing to be with you, to help you, to evaluate these things, to answer these questions. You may have questions that come up tonight after you walk out the door or after you go home, or you've had a chance to really absorb and digest a little bit of what's been said here. Don't hesitate to call on us. We are here, Greg's here, I'm here, you know, resources that Dola has, we're here to assist you guys.
If I could actually add to that, I, I too, some of you may have heard, I have taken an interim position with Archuleta County, which is my home county here, Pagosa Springs. But I, I care and I want to help as much as I can. So you guys have my phone number, and I'd be delighted to help in any way I can.
You guys have questions for us?
No, I think you guys made it pretty clear. I mean, we should wait a while and get the, the June information that we need, the taxes, and then sit down and talk about it and explain it to the people who weren't here.
Well, and that, and that's the key. I mean, I know it's unfortunate we're missing a few of the board members here. But, you know, once again, it's, I'm more than happy to continue to come to these meetings and sit down with all of you to provide kind of, I actually talked to the mayor last week, and I was saying, you know, my job is not here to tell you what you guys should do. You know, Greg said it right. Fortunately, you all are the decision-makers, you're going to ultimately have to do that. I think my job is providing assistance to your staff and to all of you with some general perspectives. What are some general government practices? Very similar to the questions you guys were asking before during the audit. Those were great questions, very similar questions that I hear other communities ask. And that's what we can do. We can tell you what other communities are doing. We can tell you what's worked in communities and what sometimes things don't work in communities. And provide that resource to you to help you all make the best and most informed decisions you can for your community.
I guess my feeling is that if we do indeed need to cut, that we would propose that those cuts be across the board. And I know soon we'll be meeting with the county in a joint meeting and also our shared services. So do we kind of say a message to the shared services that, I mean, again, until we see what we're looking at, you know, to project a little closer what our shortage will be, but that we possibly request that they look at their budgets and cut if they can in some of our shared service departments?
I wouldn't necessarily say. I, I would absolutely agree, and I already know the county is already going through their budget, for example. Cynthia's got to spend some time with the county when she was here also. Obviously, you know, everybody's impacted with this. Absolutely agree, everybody should be looking at their budgets. I mean, your businesses are looking at their budgets. I'm guessing even some of your residents are looking at their home budgets and what, what this impacted this summer, this year. I mean, let's be frank, I mean, this really quite, the issue, the situation we're in started last October, November with the lack of snow and winter. So, you know, everybody should be already looking at their budgets. I would not necessarily be saying, be looking at cuts. And I wouldn't advise all of you to look at cuts. I'd say, you do a hard look and analysis of your budget and your line items, but you're not necessarily looking to cut. And I think I would also caution that you be careful with that statement of cut across the board. Because once again, when you're looking at services, I'll use a scenario in another community. We had an individual that we removed for a number of reasons. Some of it budget-related. But we really had to look at what, it wasn't what, it wasn't just the number, the dollar amount that you were saving by the removal of this person. In this particular case, we had an individual who was a planner in the community. They were retiring. And we were also facing some budget issues at the time. And so the council had asked us to go back and do some analysis of, okay, do we backfill that position? The person's retired, do we backfill that position? We ultimately did not backfill that position. But council still wanted to maintain some level of the service because the demand was still there for that, what that, that person did. So we stripped down the level of service that we were providing. And I will say, at the time, it's always easy to Monday morning quarterback, we made the decision that we thought was best, and I would still stand by the decision we made. It took about five or six years down the line that we discovered our decision was not a good decision. And the reason being is because some of those services- And the reason being is because some of those services we cut back actually hurt our community with the long-term planning that we were doing for the community. And so that's where I'm saying, it's not just a body that you're pulling away, it's a service that you're pulling away, and you need to really be looking at, it's not just today. You're making, and you guys heard this when I did the training with you guys a number of months back, you're making decisions that impact your community, not just today, but they impact your community a year from now, five years from now, potentially 25 years from now. And so you really need to, as much as you can, create your own crystal ball, and really try to say, okay, what are the long-term impacts of this type of thing? And so it's those conversations you, you need to be internally having, but you do have to work with everybody else in your community, recognizing those other organizations, they're already taking hits themselves. The county is an example. The county relies on sales tax also, not to the level that the town does, but they're impacted, they're already evaluating those type of things. Those other shared services areas, yes, they should be looking at those things. If they're not, I would encourage them to, or once again, offer some assistance and have some frank conversations where you sit down, there's, there are resources out there that can help people with that, you know, once again, Dola, that's what we do with other governmental entities, we can do those things. But yeah, you should be having that conversation of saying, hey, we need to talk, because we're not gonna get the revenues that we thought we would, and we need to evaluate, I mean, it, it's one of those, we all need to kinda cinch the belt a little bit, not just one, one body carrying the brunt of it.
Yes, and I think that's my point.
Yeah.
Is even, you know, in our businesses that we run, you know, I didn't lay anyone off, I just cut back, and everyone rotated in and out, I didn't close my establishment over this incident. So I feel, I guess it's inherent in me to take that forward, and to think that we could all absorb a little, and then I think we could, we can make it through this.
Yeah. And that, and that's absolutely right. I mean, it's helping your neighbor, so to speak, you know? Let's all take a little bite with it, with the idea that we're all positioned in a better place that as things do recover, and they will recover, but as they do recover, we're in a better position to advance and move forward. I appreciate you guys taking the time to listen and engage with this. I unfortunately know there are councils that they don't, they disengage, they just say, well, staff will take care of it, and then all of a sudden, when the, you know, when it gets desperate, they make desperate decisions. The fact that you guys are taking the time to listen and analyze and absorb this, that's, that's to be commended, because there are important decisions to be made, and you, you have to have that vision. And unfortunately, not everybody has that vision. You walk out the door tonight, I'm willing to bet, in the next 24 hours, one of you's gonna get accosted by somebody saying, ah, you need to do this, right? But, you know, that's, that's just the nature of it, you're, you're looking at this broader picture, you really have to have this broad vision for your community that goes beyond here and now. It goes into, you know, what position are we in, in, let's say, September and October are 10% up? Are we in a position that we can handle that? Are we ready for that? It, it was funny, when, when we were at that drought meeting last week, the CEO of Purgatory was speaking, and she was saying, we in the ski industry are the eternal optimists, that no matter how bad a winter is, we always, always will say, don't worry, next year will be a great winter, you know? And she kept repeating that through the whole time. Well, I'll tell you what, if she's right, are we ready for that? Are we ready to absorb that, be it the influx of visitors to the community, be it the services our citizens are expecting, and then how does that position us for next summer? You know, if all goes well, and we return to more of a natural thing, your data shows you guys have been on the uptick over the last number of years, are you ready and positioned to be able to absorb the people coming next year? You know, you got, you gotta, gotta look at that, that long-term, it's not just today. It is, where are we for this fall, where are we for this winter, and quite frankly, where are we positioning ourselves for next summer? Because we wanna be able to be hit the ground running if we have the opportunities come deposited on our door. 'Cause what's the worst-case scenario? I know from tours standpoint, if tourists show up and the door's closed, they'll, they'll walk on, and they'll go somewhere else.
And they won't come back.
They won't come back, exactly. You wanna have that door open, and we're here, we're welcoming you, we're ready for you, and we're excited you're here. And so, I mean, it's that, kinda that mentality you gotta be looking at in the long term. Doesn't mean, no, we gotta have some serious talks, no, but you gotta make sure you're taking that, that, that long-term vision into consideration.
We really appreciate you guys coming over.
Oh, that's a pleasure. Our pleasure. I mean, you guys have heard me say it before, it's my next-door neighbor, I love coming up here, this is where I wanna be.
Well, you'll probably be asked to come back.
I hope so. If you don't ask, then I'm worried about you, Barbara.
And Greg and Patrick, on behalf of the staff, we're really grateful that you both have taken the time to come and advise us and help us through, support us in.
Yeah. I just hope things slow down for all, us in a broader sense, that we can focus on getting back to normal right now.
It's my pleasure.
Thank you, Greg.
Anything else for me?
I don't think so, Greg, but thank you very much, have a safe trip.
Thank you very much, and like I said, I'm here for you guys, you got my number, give me a call if you need.
Thank you, Greg, thank you.
Bye, Greg.
Okay. Good night.
Good night.
Turn it off, no one else is gonna join.
I'd love to also like to thank Michelle, which is such wonderful financial statements, and for keeping us always informed, and, I mean, we've been here. Anything else to make on that? Okay, thank you, everybody, it's 7:40, so unless we have anything to throw, I'll do a comment. All right? Okay, thank you for coming, then I'm rolling out.